Well, I guess we can open this meeting as we normally do. I'm gonna take role, Mr. Trebs.
Here.
Ms. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Knapp.
Here.
And Ms. McQuaid.
Here.
You wanna do the swearing in Kelvin? I know we don't have a full house per se, but...
Two of you have to be sworn anyhow.
Yep.
Raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? What's the rest of that?
Yeah, I don't know.
Something there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, here you go.
Bigger, about twice.
There we go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone who intends to testify, please raise your right hand and be sworn. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, state "I do."
I do.
And when it's your turn to testify, state your full name, address, and affirm that you've been sworn in.
Great. With that housekeeping, I wanted to welcome the BZA to another meeting in the month of August with a bit different theme. We haven't actually looked into the code in some time. Just giving you the background, the last time we talked about the zoning code and the rewrite that's taking place was actually August of 2024. So we're just about, just over one year. And we have had ongoing discussions, as you're all aware, starting with the zoning commission. And the zoning commission made their recommendation to, for approval of the code, which moved it along to the trustees level. And now Board of Trustees has had two meetings, one in July, one last night, and those discussions are ongoing. So with all of the activity and some, both research and various new developments in terms of the discussion between zoning commission and at staff level, we thought it'd be a great time to bring you into the fold once more in this process and also just take a little look back into where we've been in this process, so you have that context, contextual awareness about the code rewrite. So without further ado, I have some presentation slides that if you have followed the trustee meetings, you will notice some of these came from that presentation, and then there are a few new additions to the presentation as well. And for those of you who haven't seen it, I think it will be pretty useful. So, this is gonna be a little bit small print, and if there's any way that our tech expert, Mr. Ambler, can zoom in, I can take us through the beginnings of the code rewrite, the genesis of starting this entire process. So that goes clear back to 2018. In 2018, we had our, what was called Planning Orange. It was the Comprehensive Plan Rewrite Initiative. So township staff trustees at the time, they commissioned the Ohio State University class, master's class, to come in and perform research and be consultants for the township. And culmination of their research efforts, engaging with the public, was the Planning Orange Comp Plan that ended up being approved at the zoning, or recommended for approval at the zoning commission in October of 2018. And then after October, moved on to the trustees, and then that was officially adopted as the township's comprehensive plan in November of 2018. So it wasn't that long after, based on many recommendations that we'll touch on in a couple slides, that the zoning code was looked at by an outside consultant from a diagnostic perspective, seeing the health of the zoning code and making notes on that, which I will also touch on. So that was in mid, late 2019. Zoning Code Diagnostics lasted through kind of the end of 2019. And then there was an official agreement for that township to move along with a consultant called Caffey Zoning at the time. And we'll kind of move along into a couple years later when the zoning code rewrite drafts were starting to be produced. So in 2021, was the Board of Zoning, I should say the trustees' resolution to move into contract with what is still Caffey Zoning but renamed ZoneCo. ZoneCo became the official consultant to do a draft rewrite of the zone, entire zoning code. And then that process moved along. There was open house in 2022, engaging with the public. There was other open house the next year in 2023, July. And then we've, in the last approximately year and a half, we have introduced the rewrite, the current iteration, to the public in a public format. And that was given by the zoning director, Robert Duffy. And then, if you wouldn't mind scrolling to the very bottom portion. So, about, coming up on a year ago, the amendment, the official amendment to be reviewed by the zoning commission was made, so that was September 2024, under ZON-24-05. And then that official amendment was reviewed, and I believe we'll see in the slides approximately eight different sessions with the zoning commission, who went into great detail to review, provide feedback, and suggested to the zoning board, Board of Zoning, sorry, the Board of Trustees, what they felt could be enhanced and edited as far as the zoning code draft. And then finally, as I mentioned, zoning code, zoning commission recommended the approval of the rewrite in June of this year. As stated, there have been two meetings with the Board of Trustees, one in July, initially hearing about the zoning code rewrite, reviewing that at a high level. And then this past meeting, just yesterday, when various topics, questions that were posed in the July meeting were revisited. And we'll even go through to some extent, as you're interested or would like more detail on, kind of what we're, what we're doing in terms of research to help, help move this process forward, answer questions, and make some, some needed corrections in the zoning code draft. So, that's the timeline. I will kind of again back out to the comprehensive plan, since that's where this all started. So, this was created again with Ohio State, in partnership with Ohio State University, adopted in 2019 by the Board of Trustees, and this is quoted from the plan, comprehensive plan. "Planning is a process that is used to create goals and a long-term vision that will guide future growth and development in a community." So the next slide, one specific goal that calls attention to the code is consider, Goal Z1, "Consider amending the zoning code and the map to enhance the community's image and to promote the pedestrian-oriented development." So if you wanna scan through those sub-goals, those feed into that overarching desire to improve the community's image and help the environment for pedestrians. Yep. All right, next goal, that's Z2, or I'm sorry, Z4, that we're gonna touch on, was said, "Review and revise development standards to encourage a sustainable physical environment that meets Orange Township's community character and aesthetic standards." So I wanted to mention, because this is pretty impactful to you as the BZA, is the reviewing both parking standards, parking for being set on the side or the rear of buildings, and making sure those are properly screened. And then for signage, "Consider amending the signage requirements to ensure that they are legal and consistent with the community character." And so we'll have a little bit of signage discussion. I really wanted to introduce that and see if you had any specific feedback based on what staff has done in the last year. Okay. And then that zoning diagnostic, I'll move through this in 2019, as you saw the timeline. It was Caffey Zoning, became ZoneCo, did a diagnostic of the zoning resolution, and the full report was given to the township in 2020. Their general principles included the zoning should be respectful of the existing and reflect the desired development intention patterns of the community. Number two, that the zoning should regulate only what needs to be regulated and focus on desired outcomes. And then number three, that zoning should be the implementation of a plan, being the comp plan, and not a barrier to achieving the vision. So, three general outcomes there. All right. So the other conclusions were zoning resolution, the existing code fails to effectively permit housing diversity and pedestrian-oriented development that could otherwise promote more vibrancy and character with an Orange Township. Minimum parking requirements are excessive, they contribute to sparse development patterns. In most cases, setbacks, lot sizes, density standards, and building heights are currently prohibitive to creating the kind of character that is desired in the plan. Generally applicable section is lacking regulations that should be present, such as context-specific landscaping, so doing more with landscaping standards and straight districts. Things like streetscaping, context-specific signage, and then parking reductions, also things like drive-through restriction regulations, potentially fencing restrictions, accessory structure regulations, and accessibility standards. So another big one here is the document just being a layman's friendly document. There is going to be, on our end in particular, as the final push, reformatting and improving readability from even what we have now. But as you've probably already seen in the draft code, there is a lot more in terms of the ability to, to see hierarchy in text, going from a main section to subsection, a lot more with visuals, tables that enable quicker reference than what you currently have, which is predominantly just written-out, bullet-pointed text format. So the zone code will be formatted as a final step, but what we have today is moving in the direction of that bullet point I just read. And then finally, the ubiquitous application of planned districts for most land, most of the land in the township will create unique opportunities and challenges in the future. So, few recommendations here from the zoning consultant. Reorganize the document to standardize language. So, we have had a lot of enhancements to the definitions and making sure that those are as consistent and also relevant and thorough, which is, it adds quite a bit compared to what our definitions section has, is in the current document. And another enhancement, as I kind of alluded to, is the utilization of both tables and graphics. I do wanna mention, before I forget, that we're more than happy to pull up any of the code sections that you find most interesting, and even put those side by side with what we currently have. If anything doesn't make enough standalone sense to you, if you wanted to see those things put up against each other, we'll go into that in detail a little bit later on. So, develop guidelines, design guidelines, and landscaping requirements that promote the kind of aesthetics in the community that they desire. Remove districts that are not applied anywhere in the township. And then employ development regulations that encourage and fill development within the township's commercial corridors. And then increase density maximums, decrease minimum lot sizes wherever possible to begin utilizing land more sustainably and efficiently in the township. And here we are again. Revise the signage section, add some common signage types that are clearly defined. So, this effort was, again, ZoneCo, working with township staff in early 2022. There were public open houses, as you saw the timeline, 2022, 2023, public presentation of that. Trying to remember if I saw you there, but that was held in this room in March of 2024. And then staff has been working continually on edits and improving the existing draft code since about summer of 2024. But we are continuing to find things here and there, including with the definitions of various, various sections that we can kind of be as complete and as specific as we need to. So even if there are things grammatically, things like word choices that don't make sense, please feel free to call those out. We also are more than interested to hear about your feelings beyond just signage, things like the uses, the types of uses that are in our new sections or our rewritten sections for permitted and conditional uses. One topic of discussion last night, which we'll get more into, is FR1 uses as well as C2 uses. And we've put together some summaries on that, if we want to go into more detail on those. And then, so finally, with the zoning code rewrite, I did already state, but the zoning commission formally initiated the amendment for this code rewrite approximately 11 months ago. So why are we doing this new zoning code? This, it's been decades, that's the bottom line. It's been since 1993, since there was a major zoning code update. Many of our current developments require variances and divergences in order to proceed. Everything, that includes the biggest, bigger developments for commercial to small patios, anything that qualifies as a structure. So the new code will add new districts and delete unused districts, which is something we can touch on. And then it will respond to the current trends and conditions of the community. The goals are to have a consistent and transparent zoning code that maintains our attractive community, and this eases burdens on business owners, residents, those who might have to come in right now when it, it isn't maybe necessarily something that leads to the betterment or the vibrancy of the community so directly. So we can talk about, in a signage perspective, I think some of you might have some, some things to say along those lines. So we'll get into that. And then what does this mean? So there will be no changing of zoning districts for existing properties. If you're zoned one thing, if you're in a single-family planned residential development, all of the standards, including the development text, will continue to apply. So I wanted to make sure that that was known. Potentially, we're looking at things like the density of the districts in the future code changing, so we can clarify that in, in just a little bit. So every structure that, and also use, that lawfully exists currently will be able to remain. There will not be any, excuse me, HOA regulation impacts. Only two of the current zone districts are changing, have, you know, these are straight districts, and these are the only two that have the, have standards that are going to be changing. So that's why I brought up the uses specifically for those permitted and conditional. And then the new districts will be options for rezonings. So, you'll see a little bit different nomenclature there. How will the districts change? The current zoning system is a series of planned districts, which are sets of zoning rules that are unique to a property. New zoning districts are primarily straight zoning districts, where zoning rules are uniformly applied to all of the properties across those districts. So new zones will include mixed-use neighborhood, which is single-family, and community living, which is multifamily, commercial corridor, and flex employment, which is industrial. The Lewis Center Village was proposed to have its own overlay district, based on community feedback at this point. The direction, I'll put a little asterisk here, the direction would be that this would not have an overlay district, and that the existing process that some residents are accustomed to for improving their homes would, would continue. So you'd have a non-conforming structure, you'd have to follow the process of coming before the BZA and meeting the requirements of the FR1 district. And then there will be a catch-all planned development for unique projects. So, what are the differences? New zoning districts will help to streamline the processes, and so the intention is to streamline and provide consistency and flexibility. Straight districts be kind of a different, two dual options here. So straight districts versus the planned district standards, the planned districts will have their place. Design standards will exist for commercial buildings, and I think this would be one to at least peruse with you all in a little bit, because this is a big one. This commercial buildings standards, there will be applicability for places of worship, including an FR1. So it states "commercial buildings," but I wanted to put that, that one out there.
Thank you.
And then buffering between commercial industrial, that goes back to landscaping requirements, and ensuring that, that buffering exists, that landscaping requirements are more enhanced than they are today, whereas we don't have certain districts, certain districts are essentially absent of strict landscaping requirements. Parking lot designs with various enhancements that include pedestrian walkways, safety-mindedness there, as well as the landscaping in islands, and then the requirement of sidewalks and multi-use paths. Right. So the new zoning districts will, I did not scroll to that one. Okay. So the differences are continued. For signs, they will be regulated by type as opposed to content, that's case law. Signs will, and the right-of-way will continue to be prohibited, the maximum height for wall signs. I'll pause here, I don't wanna forget this one either. Wanted to go around the table, if anybody wanted to speak up as far as the height issues. We call them issues because we've had such a pattern of seeing applicants come in and request relief from the height of wall signs. But I wanted to, and it sounded like through the last year, there was some feedback suggesting that, yes, we would not want to deal with this in the future, we would like to remove the height requirement from the code language. But if the BZA just wants to share their thoughts at this point and state whether they are in favor of removing the height requirement of 15 feet, if they feel like that should be done away with completely, or have any thoughts on that piece?
I really appreciate that the focus is on the size of the sign rather than its height. Because I think most of the signs that have come through here since I've been on, we have approved them being at a different height. I think that probably when the code, current code was written, we had small, like community commercial-type buildings where 15 feet was the reasonable height. But if you go down, I think it's Corduroy.
Yeah.
There are a couple of buildings that have the, have it at the initial height, and they look ridiculous. And the ones that we've approved and put it at a higher, better height are so much more aesthetically pleasing and easier to locate the building. So I think that, I think without, you know, we take every case as an individual, but we're kind of seeing the writing on the wall that a better, smaller sign at a good height is far better than sticking with the 15 feet. At least that's my feeling.
Yeah.
I go back to the people not knowing or not reading the zoning laws and designing a building for something that has a sign at 25 feet. And I agree, it looks good at 25 feet, but they knew it going in. And over my tenure, I've seen that more than aesthetics. And I'll use the dentist. She came in and wanted to raise her sign, made sense to me. But she knew it when she put her original sign in there, or somebody should have known it. And the same sign companies are doing every building. There's not that many of them around. So that would be my only caveat to that, is that, you know, they've gotta pay attention to what they're doing.
I agree, but unfortunately, they, the developers that all come in here, come in with way more houses per, than what the code says, and they get approved every time. So, it's not right. But I think we've been looking at them on a case-by-case basis. We, we would rather have a good-looking product than a, than necessarily obey the code. If there's an option.
So when, when you say maximum height will be removed, what could come through as default without having to come to us? Like, are we gonna have a 100-foot sign out there somewhere?
Well, there wouldn't be a change to the freestanding-style signs.
Okay.
So we're looking at that 8 feet that you're familiar with. There's gonna be the height restrictions in the districts that we're generally accustomed to. So inherently for wall signs, you're not going to be having signs protruding high above the buildings, or for that matter, building-mounted types of signs. Those will continue to be prohibited signs. Yep.
So there is basically language that regulates that, that they must not exceed the top of a parapet of a building? How do you, how do you regulate that?
We can look at that. I think it should be consistent with what we already have. So building-mounted signs are not permitted, they're a prohibited sign, type of sign, when you're talking about on the roof, above the building, projecting above the top portion of the facade for that matter.
Something along that language, that seems to address perhaps a concern.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's logical at that point.
Yeah. Thank you.
How much did they change the, since the focus will be on the side, size of the sign, did they put in different size restrictions or?
Yeah, so the way that the draft is listing the sizes is a little smaller. I think we're, don't quote me, but I think it's 1.5 square feet for every lineal foot. So compared to now, that's, if my math is right, it's approximately half the size of the current code. And I can say that there has not been a pattern where we're running into folks trying to do signs that are limited with the size. I, I haven't seen evidence of that. They can have multiple wall signs, so as many wall signs as they want, as long as it meets the allotment. And you're talking about some long facades in some cases, you mentioned Corduroy Road, so it does give them options, even if the sizes, the maximum, maximum area allowed for the wall signs is smaller.
And that's based on lineal feet of the facade?
Linear height, that's right.
Linear feet. So with the facade lineal foot measurement.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
There is no restriction on the number of signs on a building, though?
Not, not from what I'm aware in the zoning draft.
I thought that was in the area, total area of signage.
The area restricts it, so typically people will not do signs that are so small that they're legible. So there's a natural balance with how they do that. But we don't cap the number of wall signs on any facade for, if that's your question.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. Interesting. Wow.
It was either our, Wendy's and Tim Horton went out. Somebody came in and they wanted, and it might be the chicken place.
Chicken.
And, um...
Yeah, they had a bunch on the side.
Yeah. Not only that, but their logo, which was a chicken or a rooster, that also counts. And we had a maximum square footage for the area taken up by signs, which is why I mentioned that, because otherwise, you could do a lot of signs between 15 feet and 30 feet.
Yes.
And none of them would be small, you know, they'd still have a foot, two-foot letters.
But there is still a maximum area covered by signs?
Yeah. Again, that's dictated, yeah.
Wasn't, I think the Popeyes, didn't they have to like take some off of their plan?
Yeah.
And they still have quite a few.
Yeah.
But at least it doesn't look bad.
Percentage-wise, they got from almost 200% down to about 30 to 40%, I think, as a variance. And that, that's how that worked. And that's, to me, is kind of typical of what I've seen. Panera was the same way. The other chicken place... it's the same way.
Chick-fil-A?
Chick-fil-A. And then I think Del Taco came in, but they got the monument sign in addition, so.
They were above the.
They came back through for them.
They were above the fifteen feet.
Yeah. And what's that cup of Joe or whatever?
Crimson?
That's that Crimson Cup is also above, but architecturally it worked. But I, that and the Ninja car wash, both of them built structures in the architecture of the building to accommodate signs at a very high level. And that's my first bugaboo, I was saying.
I think that came up with the auto shop over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the corner parcel at Orange Point. So, yeah, I certainly.
It came up on Nissan again too. Nissan, the auto body shop behind. And of course, they grandfathered those poles in, and they're not poles now.
I mean, it looks nice, the new location.
It does look really.
It does.
It was, I was just trying to recall that when I drive by it, I thought there was something about the signs that were on the west side of 23, that they were going to remove those, once they did that over there, and I can't recall if they're down now or not, but I saw them up, I don't know, a month ago, it's like.
I think they're still.
They're keeping the one high one.
The one high one.
The one high one they left alone, and then the other two.
I thought the little ones were going.
I thought the one was going to go on the building that said used cars or whatever, pre-owned, and it didn't.
I don't know.
I wish it would. Sorry, we're getting down.
I'm sorry, yeah, I know.
Going down the revenue. But I'm trying to think of like other cases that have come up that.
Yeah.
I like this.
And I do want to make one other distinction, so the new code section for wall signs. I'm trying to recall why I memorized the 1.5 square feet. But I just want to take you through the the smaller scale non-residential buildings, so if they're 150,000 square feet or less, they would still have the three-square-foot per lineal foot of building facade on which that sign is located. For the large-scale non-residential building, which is over 150,000 square feet with just a single tenant, so like the beverage distribution, that has no, the requirement would be no larger than 5% of the total facade area of the building on which the sign is located, so that would be.
Where in the code is it?
Um, that would be page, I told, should have mentioned 169. Yep, and so there you go. It would be no larger than 5% of the total facade area on which that sign is located for the maximum cumulative size of the wall signs. And then going, it kind of goes back to that initial for the smaller scale. But if you have a large-size building with multiple tenant spaces, just to break up that, there will be multiple tenant spaces and signs there. You'll have that three per, three-square-foot per lineal foot of building facade standard on there. So, and then the other standards, I think Mr. Pax wanted to confirm, but the wall signs shall not extend above a roof line where they are attached to non-parapet walls, parapet walls. And the wall signs shall not extend above a parapet wall to which they are attached. So kind of both scenarios. So if we're fairly content with wall signs, if Mr. McCoy had anything for the signs, great.
I know that one of the trustees had a little heartburn on getting rid of the fifteen feet. And I'm hoping you'll send our wishes along to her that.
Yeah, your feedback, all of your feedback will be put into the notes and conveyed. So, yeah, thank you for being forthcoming with that.
Is there any restriction on elimination on building mounted signage?
Projecting signs.
Hmm, that's a good question.
I mean, it's either they're backlit illuminating, or if they have lighting that is projecting down on them.
Yeah, this, projecting signs may be internally or externally eliminated. That's for projecting signs.
Well, do we have anything in the code that I can set a little laser in the yard and write Goodyear Blimp on the building? It's a sign.
Well, that's a wall sign, right?
That would be a wall sign, yeah.
Wall signs may be eliminated through the following methods. This is on page 169. Indirect lighting methods, like gooseneck lighting, individual reverse channel letters, halo lit or reverse lit, individual channel letters with transparent plastic covering to shield the source of illumination, or internally eliminated cabinet sign faces where the sign face is completely opaque except for translucent letters, numbers, symbols, logos, and characters. I don't see lasers in there.
I think we ought to think about it.
Everything else is without lasers.
I won't bring up EMCs yet, but.
We're getting there.
Yeah, I know.
Two bullet points away, so we can move right along, but.
I know this is a strange time to ask about it, but I'm sure you have something in there that I, I'm not remembering about businesses that park their trucks, that it's essentially a sign. You know, they've put a sign on the side of their truck and then they park it onsite or they park it offsite. I'm sure there's something that responds to that in the code, right?
Well, there, in the existing code, no, in the draft code, it doesn't stand out, so it's a good note for me to take. And it sounds like you have, multiple of you have some concern that that's, that needs to be restricted in some way, is that correct?
Yeah.
One, that it not, and also that it not block visibility.
Yeah.
I know of a particular truck that is parked in a residential driveway, that's a commercial truck, which I don't have a problem with, but they park it so you can't see to get out of the driveway.
If it's in a residential district, that would be something we would have enforcement capability over. But if it's in a commercial district currently, there's, as far as I'm aware, there's no provision for that.
So there is a rule for residential areas, is it just like a?
It's a commercial vehicle standard. I would have to look into, I'm not sure if Philip, that jogs your memory in any way, our commercial vehicle language. But we could look into that a little more deeply for you.
Well, until the, they opened the extension of Green Meadows going north, we had routinely on Sunday mornings, or Sunday period, car carriers parked three abreast in there where the new eastbound of Home Road is going. And they were parking on the new section of the north part of Green Meadows. There are several times they were close enough to the intersection, I had trouble seeing around them.
And it can get tricky when they're either in the right-of-way or, you know, on public, I'm sorry, private property. That, that can change things. So it's a case-by-case basis, and we would certainly need to start by figuring out exactly where is it, is it public or private? Yeah, kind of go from there.
What you're saying about commercial trucks is what triggered that.
Yeah, and so, yeah, those notes about the signage on those vehicles, you know, we have a lot of food trucks and thinking about, yeah, is there a way that we can say, you know, those are prevalent, too prevalent when it's in a commercial area? So it sounds like that your concerns are also in the commercial sections, that those are kind of being used in the place of monument sign.
Yeah, when, when their business is closed and they back it up to the streets, so it sits right where a monument sign would sit. They've made a monument sign on wheels.
Yeah, it should be time-bound, right, and not, definitely not blocking visibility.
Yeah. But it's a little different than the flag signs that they put up.
Yeah.
What are those 14 days for new openings or?
Yeah, so, yeah, if you're talking about the grand opening, we weren't planning to do any modification with that. That would still be an option for businesses, a single time. And it would be a 14, 15-day duration to have your grand opening display up, which could consist of feather flags, inflatable signs, yard signs, just a combination thereof in that time. So enforcement would take place after that permit expires.
Question, we have one person in the audience. Is there something that you want to participate in?
Would you just like to listen?
I, I want to say more quickly, swear.
He does, he, he's welcome to provide comment, if you're open to it.
Yeah, did you have any comments, or you just want to listen?
Yeah.
Can we do a public comment? We have to swear him in, because he came in a little bit.
Yeah, let's make sure he's sworn in.
Raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth and nothing but the truth? And.
It's up there again.
Yes.
Sorry?
Oh, I was just.
Oh, thank you.
It was up there.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth, if so, state I do.
I do.
And then your full name, address, and we know you've been sworn in.
Paul Tav, 1385 Franklin Street. I'm going to hang out for a little while and then I'm going to go to gymnastics with my kid, but yeah, thank you. I am here to stay informed on what's happening with farm residential zone, specifically SubArea 15, Lewis Center. I appreciate recent engagements from township zoning and leadership to take feedback from the village residents into account as we consider the new zoning code. So just to make it known, I, in general, I prefer my home to be considered more farm, less residential, when those two concepts disagree, and I think a lot of neighbors do as well. I'm aware I don't have a lot of land, but it's important to me that I do have the freedom to use that land to whatever degree I can to support myself and my family, whether it's home-based business, or a garden, or a little farm, or whatever it is, right? And for context, I grew up in South Florida, in a neighborhood with a really heavily regulated HOA, where like, if you even think about having a chicken, they fine you, right? So in that light, I'm in favor of the revisions that I've seen that help enable home-based businesses and more agricultural activities in FR1. And I also support the decision to remove the Lewis Center Village overlay district. I see the intent for sure, but I do support the decision to remove it after, you know, that meeting and the review with the neighbors as well as the zoning department and trustee Ringel. I think the permitting and variance process is valuable, and it's fair, and it effectively handles resolving issues that arise from the non-conforming properties, and even though it can be stressful, right? And it can be a lot sometimes, it is effective. And one thing that I want to make sure we're careful of, and I appreciate the adjustments to help do this, is, you know, I would imagine a lot of people look at that area and just salivate over being able to come in and buy up everything and split up all those parcels again and build a bunch of stuff there. And I really want to keep that place the way it is, and I think the changes that I've seen to the code, the revisions to the revision, help do that, so, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Except for the side yard setback in FR1, it's too close.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
I knew you had feedback.
Well, yeah, in fact, we will talk about density and setbacks here momentarily, but let me get us through that sign, sign summary. I think we were last at the pole sign, bullet point, and just confirming that that will continue to be prohibited. The sign, monument-style signs that you're familiar with will remain. For electronic signs, there's some updates. So this would be permitted only in institutional districts. And you might ask, well, what does institutional entail? We have confirmed that that would entail school districts as well as public uses. That would not be something eligible for houses of worship, so they would not be eligible institutional to have those types of signs.
And that would be a bar for them asking for a variance for a use that says you cannot use that?
They could still ask, can't they?
Yeah, I think they could potentially, like we had recently.
We still get the fast-food joint asking for an EMC sign even though it says you're not allowed to have one?
The definition of the EMC was firmed up?
Yeah, that has been noted as needing to be consistent and thorough, so I appreciate those of you who spoke up about a thorough definition. We hope to have all the changes that have been collected here subsequent to the next trustees' meeting, because the final trustees' meeting, if that ends up being the final trustees' meeting, two meetings from now, would need to go through with a fine-tooth comb the finalized format.
So when could this go into effect? At the beginning of the year?
It's hard to look into a crystal ball with certainty, but certainly we have some ambition that, yeah, the end of the year would be a reasonable, not-too-lofty kind of a timeframe. I think people have given this a fair shake, beginning last year, as you've seen, when this was initiated in the the code rewrite amendment, so, yeah, that, that would be one of the possibilities. But I also hate to put a firm prediction out there.
You're holding my breath.
So, yeah, that's all I'll say on that.
It's the earliest.
Yeah, yeah. But we are working diligently and going to provide more feedback whenever folks have questions and follow up accordingly, including for this meeting as zoning staff, so this is one of our priorities as a zoning department. And then finally, for the signage, the temporary commercial signs, as we stated, they will continue to be permitted if they're the style of sign that's an advertising, developer, contractor, real estate type of sign. Those will look very similar to what we have today. And then I mentioned the grand opening style signs. Definitions, we touched on that, is, so far with signage, we're working on shoring those up. Page, and then the similar, so we talked about what's different, the similar and same category as existing planned districts in the code will remain the same. So single-family, planned industrial, all of those districts will, will continue to remain. Procedures for zoning changes, such as rezonings and appeals, those processes will continue in the same, same format. And then non-conformities, when we have cases where there are properties out of compliance, based on age, predating the existing code, tho- those processes, sometimes entailing coming before you all, will continue. Enforcement, the zoning department enforcement will continue to remain the same in lighting regulations as well. Alright, to the current day, so I added a few notes here, to bring us up to speed. That the zoning commission over last year, beginning last year and into this year, had eight hearings, and they recommended approval to the board of trustees of this, this code subject to some of their findings, as they shared in their meetings for enhancements. And then two board of trustee meetings have occurred to date for the zoning code rewrite. One was in July, and then one was yesterday. The formatting, and I meant to state July, sorry, July 23rd is correct, and that was August 27th for the meeting. And today is our meeting. The formatting is one of the issues that we will see through as the final step in the code rewrite. And then this is just, as a overarching comment, that this is a zoning amendment. So it's, it's a holistic zoning amendment, but it's the same as any other, so it's the same process. And the culmination of this will be the board of trustees will make a decision on approving once they are, once they are confident that, that the code represents, I guess, the best of what they think it can be. And then since July, so zoning department has continued to review the document intermittently. We've sought many answers from legal counsel over things, a couple of those things I've already shared. Held the meeting on the Lewis Center Village overlay, that was about three weeks ago, had some resident turnout, and we appreciated folks coming up to that, that included our director and administrator as well. And then the zoning staff, we as zoning staff are researching the previous discussion topics and providing more information when necessary. My final slide, and that rounds it out for my presentation, and I'll open the floor. The board of trustees will meet on October 8th, net, which is, yeah, in a little over a month, of course, to discuss in detail certain code sections that have been brought to light, specifically the, the straight district code. to light, specifically the, the straight district code, and then go through questions that have been posed about things such as the density, permitted and conditional uses in the straight districts, as those were topics of significant interest to the trustees. The staff will continue to go through the definition sections, ensure consistency with terminology throughout the code, and make sure that, okay, I said, this, the definitions are thorough and sufficient. And then the draft code is available to anybody who would like to review. This is open to the public for comment as well, so if the public has feelings, even questions, they're always willing, always welcome to reach out to zoning staff, myself, as we're willing to provide clarification and take in their input, too. So that is my final bullet point, and I think at this point, I, I will turn things back over to you. If you wanted to see any of our code existing versus proposed side by side, we can go into that. Some of those use questions, if any of you wanted to look at the new straight districts, kind of compare conditional, permitted conditional uses, and how those uses look in the new code, we can go through that, as we have a summary document, kind of breaks it down into digestible format. Yeah, please, if, if you even have general questions, that's what we're here for tonight, and I hope that the presentation helped to give you both that context and updated view as to where things stand.
Could we look at the FR1 and the setback, side yard setback stuff?
Yeah.
And see how it's different?
Find the page.
It sounds like that's what everyone's interested in.
I've only been to a few meetings. Farm residential.
So we're going to keep this Article seven, and that's one hundred and two for the first page there. So what you might notice, first of all, we have a handy table, and when you look at the first, at the top line on that, the first thing you'll see is, as it stands currently, a one-acre sized lot is what would, what would be the minimum size in, in the new code. The current lot size for FR1, and our existing code is one point nine eight.
Is what?
One point nine eight, almost two acres.
Oh.
So this would represent a much smaller lot. And what we discussed last night, at least as a summary, is there are lots that would benefit from this, as you have certain neighborhoods that have those between one and two-acre sized lots, or one point nine eight sized lots, that if they're brought down to a one-acre size, then, then they don't have that non-conformity type of an issue. So they, they would, they would essentially be looking at these standards for, for setbacks. And then obviously, with new lots being created, when they're subdivided, that could give some more flexibility for the subdivision process. So you wouldn't be looking at, you'd be looking at, obviously, half the size of a lot that the current code is requiring, thereabouts. So your side setbacks, the setback standard would be adjusted to that fifteen feet. I sound like you might have feedback, at least starting with Mr. McCoy?
Prior to this, it was twenty-five. I saw, and I haven't paid attention to the seventy-five feet minimum lot width. I was trying to do some math here, because an acre of land is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, so divided by.
Two hundred and twenty by two hundred and twenty, if you want.
Yeah. So seventy-five feet would be a very narrow, one-acre strip of land.
Yeah.
Narrow and very.
Very long, very deep, yes. So I would probably have an issue with seventy-five feet being the minimum lot width, but I would keep the twenty-five-foot side yard setback, because if you have an acre of land, why do you need to get fifteen feet from your neighbor?
Yeah.
Without a variance, okay? I'm not saying that it's not plausible that you would need to be fifteen feet. So let's say you had an acre of land and you had to put a retention pond on it.
Yeah.
And you needed to shift the structure to where you needed to be fifteen feet from someone on your side yard, then yes, you have a hardship, you make your argument, and it'd probably be, you know, a good opportunity to get a variance, because you have a required need to have that retention pond. Not only thinking about this from the village's standpoint, but also one that we had a few, a couple of months ago, that got tabled. With a religious structure, and they were wanting to get real close, and the neighbors were probably going to riot about getting that close.
Yeah.
I, I think when you, when you, you want to, if you have a budding neighbor, you have an adjoining property, a budding property, which word am I using, a budding property, and it's not owned by you, and you want to get up to fifteen feet, and when your minimum lot size is an acre, because fifteen feet to a point-three acre lot size versus a one-acre lot size is a huge difference. So if, if your minimum lot size is an acre, I, in my opinion, I think your side setback should be back to the twenty-five feet that it was. I do agree with the changes to the front setback and the rear setback from the prior setbacks in FR1. And yes, you were talking about almost two-acre lot, but they were like eighty feet, and it was something ridiculous, because when it applied to the village, basically, you, the, the longest lot you, the deepest lot you have in the village is a hundred and twenty feet, and the way the front and, front and rear setbacks came, you overlapped, and you, and you couldn't build anything. You couldn't build a doghouse, because it was eighty feet from the back, and like sixty feet from the front, or whatever, and, and it overlapped. But the side yard setback is, and I've relayed this information to Robin twice, about the FR1. I, I was not in favor of the overlay. The overlay is a difficult thing for me, because it's a rezoning without rezoning, and there's no argument against somebody dropping down, and I'm using quotes, dropping down an overlay to use. What's your argument as a neighbor from them dropping down something that the zoning commission created? And, and changing the whole nature, and it's basically a rezone without going through that process. But that's, that's my big complaint about the, about the FR1, is, is it fifteen-feet side yard setback? Now, it makes less sense when I say twenty-five feet, if you use a seventy-five-foot minimum lot width, because now you're talking about a twenty-five-foot wide structure on a seventy-five-foot minimum lot width. So I think, I don't know where the seventy-five-foot minimum lot width comes from on a one-acre parcel, or one-acre property. Because I gotta, gotta be careful using the term parcel versus lot, because the way the auditor does things is not technically the, by lot. So that's, that's my question, is the seventy-five feet, and then I would go back to the twenty-five-foot setback without a variance.
Anybody have anything to add, or?
Please feel free to disagree.
I agree with you completely on the, on your comments. I don't have any questions on the setbacks, but I do have a lot of questions about farm residential. And I want to start by just asking, where are most farm residential areas within the township, other than the old village? And how, about how, what kind of size are we looking at? Are we looking at areas where I live, where they're between three-quarters of an acre and, and nine acres? Or are there places that are fifty acres?
It's a wide variety. We have a map that we can distill it down with. I, I think that would be.
That'd be great.
Helpful, without having to explain things.
And I guess it's because I live in farm residential, and I.
The current map, sorry.
Do I? I think it's a little different looking at farm residential if it's a corner that's zoned farm residential, that isn't close, that's maybe close to commercial, or some other uses, other than like where I live, where, and all along South Old State and Lewis Center, and a lot of the, the big county roads, where we're individual families on bigger than a lot, we're not in developments, but what, we are so sandwiched in next to each other, that when somebody does something next door to you and decides to turn it into a business, that has cars going in and out, and lights, and everything else, with essentially no, very little regulation by the township under the zoning code, I think it makes a big difference. And I guess that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. There's the map that will show just the FR1 and C2, if you go to this meeting Dropbox folder. We made a map to give you a better sense of where these FR1 parcels are, because we pulled that layer out from all of the others besides C2. And then this, you can see, at least to some level of detail, the parcel lines, if we zoom in a bit, you can see the majority of the parcels are fairly large sizes. Again, the, the detail is a little bit sparse, as far as seeing the exact parcel lines, but as you go further north, generally, besides Lewis Center Village, you have those much larger than two-acre sized parcels. But if you go in places like right off of U23 and Parkway Neighborhood, those parcels are an average size of about one point two to one point five acres, so clearly under that one, I'm sorry, one point nine eight, they're clearly under one point nine eight acres, and then.
So these are all farm residential?
Yep, and if you want to zoom in.
Because nothing along South Old State shows.
Yeah.
And I'm farm residential, am I not?
Yeah. So yours is going to show up as a pretty small by comparison parcel.
And it, yeah, it is.
And then, we'll scroll to the right, thanks, Philip.
Yeah, there's small ones there.
You have a stretch of several of them, and yours is one of the longer, I'm not sure the lot width, if it's seventy-five feet or not, but it's fairly narrow.
What my concern is, we've all been swallowed up by everything else, with absolutely no say. And now, I look at this, and it says that someone, I don't have any problem if somebody wants to use agricultural use, or something like you have. I don't think that having offices, business and professional, where people pull up in their cars and come and go, is fair to put next to a residence. You wouldn't put it in a subdivision. I don't think that a community center in a small, I guess, maybe I'd like to see two different levels. One that's farm residential, that's under a certain acreage, which would be neighborhood farm residential, because essentially, that's what we are.
Like under a couple of acres?
Or, like even under ten acres, is, you know, you're, you're next to, it depends on what you're next to. I, you know, in the public uses, one of the things that's a conditional use is a collection of recycling facility. What if somebody wanted to put that on my mom's property? I mean, that, those kinds of things, that would ruin the neighborhood for the people next door. I, I feel a real, I feel like we have to protect those folks, they have no protection from anything, and.
Are you saying if they're up against some of this, or?
I guess, we just, I just feel like we have to find a way to protect people. Now, I don't, I don't understand, you know, what accessory uses means particularly, but it says in there you could have a small solar facility. Well, what if you live on two acres on South Old State, which I don't, and the guy next door to you has five acres, and he decides he wants to put a small wind farm in? Or he wants to put solar panels in a row? I mean, I know that you don't buy your view when you buy a piece of property, but you should have a modicum of protection from what goes in around you. And I think you mentioned rezoning without rezoning, and I think we have to be really careful that whatever we suggest as a use, that could be a permitted or a conditional, that we're not actually rezoning a property without rezoning it. And that is one of my major objections to putting in a house of worship on a.
Farm residential.
On a farm residential, is because this one that we're going to be looking at, or anything like that, that sits right up against residential, it essentially changes the character of where they bought their house, they bought in a residential area. If it needs to be a commercial site with a lot of parking and lighting, and motion, and everything that goes along with a house of worship, then it should be rezoned.
Yeah.
And, and you've heard my spiel over and over again, but I'll, I'll say it for all of you, and that it, I'm really glad to hear that there are going to be design specifications for a house of worship, because as our zoning code stands now, there aren't any. And people, they, somebody can come in and build a block pole barn next to four and fifty, five-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-piece condos. And there's no, there's not a meeting where the public can go and say, they can come here and say they don't want it, but they can't go and say, I don't want a pole barn. And I think it takes all of that out of a public purview. I've expressed this to the guys several times, I'm sorry, I won't go on, and I've expressed it to the trustees, but I think that's something we need to consider as a board, in, in letting them know that that is not the way the township should do things. And I don't think it's, they've done it on purpose, I think it's just slipped through the cracks all these years.
Yeah.
And.
I definitely would be glad to note the specific types of uses that give you pause in this current set, including the conditional uses. I made a couple of quick notes, but then the discussion that we had, have had since the last trustees' meeting was figuring out where existing houses of worship and religious uses are located. I think there was some discussion that, is this something that we can entirely remove from the FR1 code? And where the conclusion is, is we have, my numbers are going to be slightly off, but there are about eleven, if I'm remembering right, out of approximately fifteen churches that are located in FR1. And by removing that entirely, we would be talking about something that overly restricts future applicants. So we can't, you know, we can't get into the territory, and, and some of this is more legal than I'm aware of or familiar with, legal discussion, but we couldn't get into a place where we're outright prohibiting uses, in, in the guise of, and not wanting it to, to impact folks. And, and so there has to be, I guess, a, a bit of flexibility on that, but I'm not discounting what you're saying either.
Why can't it be rezoned? Why can't there be required to have it rezoned? That's what I don't, you would do that for any other use. Why, why do they have a caveat? Because they can be.
The religious aspects.
But the thing is, they can be anywhere.
I think the religious aspects to, you know, case, case history have bearing into this. Again, it's a little bit above, I don't have the legal background to, to speak too eloquently or intelligently on that, but certainly with the fact that you have had this history, where the FR1 use has allowed various religious institutions to come in in the past, in fact, the majority of those have come in in the past, we're trying to be thoughtful and, and walk a fine line, and also add standards that consider the neighbors, and, and the buffering standards, to name a few. The one hundred-foot setback from residential uses for those non-residential structures will continue to be part of the code, so kind of walking that, that balance when thinking about the future applicant. So kind of walking that, that balance when thinking about the future applicants that might come in.
I just see, I see churches in houses of worship in this area that go into the, they go into the industrial areas until they can afford.
Well, we also have a five acre minimum for that, I think.
That's what we brought up in that last case.
Yeah. And so that is on us to hold that. If that's the case and once.
It still takes it out of the purview of the public being able to come in and speak to what is being built there. Not whether they have the right to build it there or not. But if, if something has a zoning change, then it goes to a zoning meeting. Notices are sent out, a hearing is held, people are allowed to come in and say, I don't want something that doesn't have any windows on that side. I want you, you have spoken in this board, you've been frustrated because we can't suggest architectural enhancements. They could do that in a planning, in a, in a zoning board meeting. They can't do it here. It's, it is, to me, it is a very difficult spot to be in as far as transparency goes with the public.
If it would be advantageous, and certainly your comments are all noted, duly noted, that the standards to, that would apply for any commercial, including religious assembly buildings are going to be added. And we can go through them in that section 21. That's page 133, if you would be able to go to that.
And I'm not sure our numbers are the same as your numbers at least.
The page numbers aren't. 21 is on our page 179.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody reformatted the text.
It has been.
Re-formatted and re-formatted.
There will be a once and for all, but we're not quite there with the formatting. And so, yeah, 21.05.
0.05, okay.
Some of the discussion as well is how do we visualize this? And so those questions came up last night. I believe we will work to provide some better visual representation of what some of those standards kind of what those standards would appear as. So yeah, street facing facade design standards, if you want to scroll down. You might note farm residential doesn't have the dot. However, I confirmed that religious structures would fall under that requirement. Scroll down a little bit further and then. So this was the standard that I was trying to explain, we'll be providing further visuals on. Any new construction mixed use commercial or other non-residential development within the applicable districts and zones shall incorporate at least three of the design features from the following list into the street facing facade for every 100 lineal feet of street facing facade. And then you do have a list which extends until, I think, page 134. And once we have more of those visuals, we're happy to circle back with you as the board. But those should be something that are covered when we speak again at the trustees meeting. So most of these are design treatments of various, various types of design enhancements. And this section, it was not just staff, but also based on working with our chair of the zoning commission. She's a licensed architect. She went through a deep, definitely a far level of detail on making sure that this was a complete list and that this was something that could feasibly work. And so wanted to make sure that this came, you knew that this came from an architect and this was well researched.
I assume the green roof is an environmental roof, not just the color?
No, it could be that it has natural plantings on top.
Well, that's what I was thinking it was, but.
Be the only reason I would even consider what that meant would be that, actual life.
Actual life.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like the early sod houses on the prairie or earth houses.
Right.
So it needs to be in the descriptions.
In the definition.
Yeah.
That would be a good specification.
So what do you think of those things, Mr. Architect?
This is funny. I mean, it's, cause we've done developmental and western, some of these are so strict in their application for what their intention is and creating pedestrian scale. That's what these are all about. It's, I understand, it makes sense, water, it's all about just creating layers that are more for the pedestrian scale that you understand brings it more comfortable, especially for front and street frontage for sidewalks and walkable communities. That's what a lot of that stuff is really about. You start to want medallions and coins and pilesters and all that stuff. That, that gets into a more of a neoclassical type of architecture style. So that's why you traditionally see that like in Westerville or Worthington or New Albany. Those are very common elements on buildings that they encourage because that's their that's their look. Not at all contemporary or modern or features when you're putting coins and little corner blocks on corners of the buildings and stuff. So that's the intention on it. So most architects or any developer, when they see that, there's understanding what the zoning code is trying to get is a pedestrian scale out of that. So they're going to make efforts, if not using coins, at least to like the banding at the item one. I mean, so it's the belt courses, in other words, that create scale on them too. I, it's, I don't know, probably not less, it's pure, that's what that's trying to do. Is create detail on the level of pedestrian scale, so.
You're, you're a licensed architect?
Yes.
So you have the familiarity.
Yes.
Why is that not applying in FR1?
Well, this isn't a, I guess the intent of the FR1 district isn't to be entirely like a planned district.
Yeah. But you, you kind of, and I don't want to argue it this way, but I'm going to argue it this way.
We get less than everybody else does.
Yeah. But if, but if you switch, the whole point of FR1 was to not interfere with agricultural uses, but yet there's less and less agricultural uses. If you applied this to FR1 to where somebody who wanted to build a barn, where agricultural uses then had to get a variance, that's a little unerest. But if I owned a bunch of land, I wouldn't have a problem with that if it protected me from, if it was a residential area and it protected me from the, the, the things that we're talking about. If it applied. So you flipped the tape, you flip it on its head.
Well, if you look at this gentleman's business, nobody even knew that his big addition was not a residence in addition to his residence in farm residential. It's a lot different than putting just like a pole barn building with no architectural.
Well, that, yeah, that's.
Enhancement at all.
Style of the neighborhood or.
It's just scale and element. That's a great point, right there. I mean, because I remember, I don't know which project it was, they came in with that big pole barn, pre-engineered piece of schlock that was like absolutely no character whatsoever to it and scale. It might as well just be on the side of a highway somewhere, selling fireworks out of it. It's just not appropriate. So that's what that stuff is protecting against. It's a little more expensive for the developer to, to, to do it, but it's a benefit. It's a benefit to everyone with that regard.
And my argument, and I'm not sure if I'm arguing, was if it applied to FR1, then the farmer or the person that wanted to put up a pole barn because that was their use for it.
Sure.
Yeah, they might have to come and get a variance, but their argument is very good because they're arguing, I want to put the pole barn up, not to put a church in it. I'm putting a pole barn up because I need a barn.
Yes. And it's setback, it's best, it's all of those elements and I could see that being a valid argument for it.
Where, the whole point of FR1 was to ease the burden on agricultural uses and it was, it's put in place to have agricultural uses. Those agricultural uses have been diminished sadly in the township. But if you flip the table on it and you say the farmer now has to come in and get a variance to build his barn, the farmer may not understand the aggravation of paying $600 to build the barn, but the farmer makes the argument because he is a farmer. And the barn's approved because it's for farming or it's for agricultural use versus the business that wants to throw up a pole barn that there are no objections to. And it's ugly. And they don't get any notice because they don't have to get a, give any notice because there is no variance requested because it's an okay use in FR1.
Good point.
That's, I'm not saying that's a solution, but it's possible.
Um, yeah, look at all the churches that are in there.
You flip it on, you flip it on its head.
All the churches that are already in it and
Don't hurt them.
All, all the churches that are on land that was originally part of a development where they have carved out or the developer said, I'm going to get this green space to, for churches or houses of worship. I don't mean to be exclusive. But a lot of developers do that to.
As a caveat.
As a caveat to get their density that they want to go in there. You got half acre instead of three quarter or an acre lots. So I, I would suggest that we include FR1s in this.
Makes it more unerest on the person that really needs the barn.
Could it be on a building that's over a specific size?
Yeah. But I don't want to see somebody in FR1 lot size one acre now try to put up a pole barn and tell me it's going to fit in the gestalt of the neighborhood.
Yeah. Now, the converse, would the BZA be fielding a undue amount of applications for people who just want to add their 200 square foot sheds? Or potentially there might need to be something about building size.
I think it needs to be building, there needs to be some.
Do square footage, yeah.
Yeah. Most people that want to put up a shed.
Don't ask for permission.
That was what I was going to say.
They go back and ask for a variance afterwards.
They're under 100 square feet.
Well, not all of them. We had several of those come in that were fairly large, 20 by 30.
20 by 30?
Yeah.
The other thing I did want to point out is we were talking about this. And when you were talking about notification, my understanding, and Eric, you haven't talked about this, we never got to this stuff is there were going to be changes, possibly changes to the distance of notification on a lot of these things.
Yeah.
They're going to extend it past that 200 feet or whatever the current standard is to.
Which, I don't know if a number was settled upon, but in looking into this further, it is possible to extend the distance. Some jurisdictions do it less than us. I know others do it more further out. And so I guess we will definitely want to, you know, confirm this, but I think over 200 feet is, is an option for the township, like 250 potentially.
They talked about it and maybe for FR1 or I don't know, I'm just throwing spitballing things. Maybe for FR1 where you have larger lot sizes, maybe your notification area is larger.
I know that that has to be consistent distance regardless.
It does have to be consistent across, okay.
But to that point, there are enough FR1s thinking about in the context of people who, they might be one neighbor away, but they have a wide property, a wide frontage. And then will they get that or will, will they miss that notification? So.
And then we have the condition in which you send the notices out and they're a member of an HOA or a club or whatever, and they give it to all of their other members. And now we've got neighbors that are two, three miles away and we've had them in here.
And we've asked that question of where do you actually live?
Yeah.
But I have, from the end of my driveway, I can look and see the property for a house of worship that I did not receive notification on. And I can see a bed and breakfast that I did not get notification on. And I can almost spit on them, but because of the width of my neighbor's lot and, you know, it's because it's farm residential, we didn't get any notice.
Are you aware by chance of what distance might have absolved that scenario?
I don't know. It's just, I mean, two things that I probably would have been an objection of and I didn't even, I thought the guy was adding on to his house and he built an entire freestanding bed and breakfast.
I think maybe, I don't know what the law says there, but you know, the solution is all abutting property owners will be notified and
Within such a distance.
Or those within 200 feet or 250 feet or something like.
Whatever they want to.
At the minimum, it's the abutting adjacent and looking into it going further than the, the 200 feet is what we have. That's, that's been discussed.
And abutting should, should include across the street.
Well, it's, it's not part of the code, but for a while, they put out signs on just saying there's going to be a zoning hearing on this, go to the website. And they used to do that and they don't do that anymore. And I'm sure it had to do with staffing or something, but it really does help. No one drives. On my road, they do.
Well, I will say the practice, and this has started earlier this year, is that we will be adding the signs. The signs, in fact, they're larger signs than before. And we do have the staffing that allows us to do that. So you'll, likely you'll be noticing that going forward.
Like that this property is so.
That's really helpful. That's really helpful. That way if somebody, if you did that, then you wouldn't have to.
I was surprised to see him on North Road the other day.
Well, ages ago, you've had to post what you were doing in the paper.
Yeah.
And we still do. There is still a paper.
The Delaware Gazette?
Correct.
Okay.
So. I know.
I can't read, so.
We also, yeah, we have our other digital avenues. We'll continue to be using those, but.
Maybe we can get electronic sign and put it on 23.
As an institutional use, no.
McDonald's would put it on their, their sign.
I'm sure they would.
Public service.
It'll only change every six minutes.
Yes.
12 if you want.
Or if there's a tornado warning.
Sorry.
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 I went right angled.
You took it.
Well, this has been, quite useful for me to take notes on, so thank you again for your openness, all of you. Is there anything else that you want to review in the front draft?
I have a question. I've been here a while. And I don't think I've ever seen the development plan for any of the projects we've ever seen. We get the, you know, I need a variance for such and such. Well, it's part of this development plan. You mention it every time. But I don't know what that development plan says. So I didn't know that, you know, well, I did, but 23 shouldn't have monument signs. And that's directly in that development plan. It's not in the zoning code. It's, you know, and we've got signs that are next to each other along a road. And they can have wildly different criteria because it was written into the development plan that they could have X instead of Y, which is what was supposed to be there. that they could have X instead of Y, which is what was supposed to be there.
That's where they get angry when they come in arguing for variance because they're like, so and so was able to do that amount on the road. The amount on the road property is not a part of the covenants and restrictions that are in the development plan for where you purchased your...
I understand, but it would be nice to know those things. So, I don't know if it goes into the zoning necessarily, but maybe you could reference the exact line or something?
Yeah, well, we'll make sure that we're referencing the full, whatever the code section is that refers to that prohibition. I, I think if I can borrow the exact language from the report as opposed to summarizing in text form, happy to do that. And just to underscore the fact that all of these planned districts will continue to exist, so we will be getting requests of that nature like we have been because those will be continuing going forth. So, well, yeah, staff will be sure to be thorough and give you the, the full section for that, that context if, if that's what would help.
It would help me, I don't know about anybody else, but it would help me.
At the minimum, we have cited the, the rezoning number, citing that it's a, for instance, a monument sign prohibition, but yeah, happy to be as comprehensive as possible and give you the full sign section if that would be of use, no problem.
I know they talked about, in the zoning diagnostic and recommendations, said increased density maximums and, increase density maximums and decrease minimum lot sizes.
Yeah, I thought that was going backwards personally.
I do too. I was just wondering. There's so much, so much in the township that's already developed residentially. Is there anything left?
There are some, there is some farmlands that are left.
I mean, as far as big chunks that...
I think the, if you're looking at north of Lewis Center Road, there's a couple of quadrants by South Old State, that's not entirely, but that's where Evans Farm right in through there.
Okay, so it hasn't already been, have a development plan on it?
Correct.
Somebody along Old State there that just passed away not too many months ago had an old sheep farm or something at one time.
Yeah, but it's, it already has a plan, does it not? The sheep farm?
Looks like they already got a road.
At Hollenback and...
Yeah, I thought I heard.
Hollenback and South Old State.
Not a hundred percent.
And between Lewis Center Road and Hollenback.
It's part of Evans Farm, I think.
And there are these smaller pockets that I've noticed some interest in folks calling in about general information, that's only five to eight acre FR1, that wanna find out if that can be subdivided, for instance. So, feeling those kinds of inquiries is, is an off and on thing, but to your point, it is an increasingly built-out township with fewer and fewer developable space and land, so keeping that in mind, certainly.
I think that was my point about like flipping that around, that a little bit more burden on the farmer or the person putting the pole barn up, but protects against the other things with that benefit of protecting the farmer in essence.
Yeah.
And in your standards, you talked about the commercial building materials and architectural features, but would you be able to look at like lot coverage and green space and parking and things like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lighting and buffering?
Yeah, most of those are going to be, as you're all familiar with in the current code, those are going to exist. So, the light trespass issues, maximum height of fixtures, downcast. And then there will be parking, parking area, actually entire site geometric standards that you're already familiar with going forward in the other districts. So, most of that will, will be consistent.
I just wanna thank you publicly, Eric, you've listened to me a lot in these meetings. And Eric met with me for probably two and a half hours one morning and all these Post-it notes and answered every question and he's a jewel.
Yes, he is.
Let's kind of use it, so I made sure to have the printout of the meeting here.
We'll put a sign, a temporary sign out front.
But yeah, thanks to all of you, whether you've met with me individually or done a phone call or emails and even just come to the, the meetings. So, last year's meeting, this year's meeting, it's greatly appreciated for your contributions because each of you has that unique perspective in your, both where you live, your occupations, your individual experiences. So, thanks for bringing that, that's very valuable. And as a township representative, I'm, I'm quite grateful to be working with all of you, so. Thank you so much. That's all I have for this evening. Anyone else have anything for, for the good? Okay, well, meeting adjourned?